Wednesday, February 5th, Hamilton County Council Meeting to Order. Mr. Auditor, may I have a roll call, please?
Ken Alexander.
President.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mark Hall.
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next we'll have an invocation and pledge led by Counselor Brad Beaver.
I just want everybody to take a moment and pray for our people, men and women in the armed services this evening, and especially Hamilton County's own reading Sergeant, Andy Duffin. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion for the minutes of the council and commissioners executive session of January 8th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for approval for the...
Do we have to do a roll call?
I think so. So can I do, can we do a motion to combine the meeting minutes? I'll do a motion to combine all three then.
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Yeah, you're right.
Should we do the... Do we have to?
You do the roll call.
Yes.
Okay.
I can do that. Ken Alexander.
Yes.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Yes.
Sue Mackey.
Yes.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Yes.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
So now I'll make the motion to approve the three.
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Thank you, passes. Next, public comments, or anything that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we move on to committee and officer reports. President, I have nothing other than thank you everyone for being here, and we had a work session beforehand, and we continue to do them. Next, Vice President. Presidents.
I got nothing.
No report.
Highway?
We did not meet.
Finance?
We did have a finance meeting last week. The minutes should have been distributed to everybody. If you have any questions, check with any of us that are on the committee, and generally for Mike is caution, 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 the legislature is in session.
Personnel?
We had a poll, and then we also had an additional meeting, which is on the agenda.
Thank you. Major projects?
We met and discussed the prioritization of projects to meet. They're spread throughout the agenda as well as future cases.
Thank you. Anything else? Most of them. No, nothing? Okay. Next?
I guess I can.
Okay.
I think everyone already, sorry, in December I had shared some information about the Imagination Library at the St. Louis Gardens, a literacy program that's still in Hamilton County, is one of the, is I think the only county that doesn't have any representation of that in the state of Indiana. I was brought to Clay Township as well as Westville, Washington Township to the library, as they would like to start program countywide, and they're going to come in next month to discuss that ask and request. I think most of you have that information, but they look on lookout for information coming in about them for next month.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on that. Having, next on the agenda is unfinished business and table business, seeing none, we move on to...
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
It passes. Next, with the Hamilton County Reserves and Liquidity Policy, we need to pass this for our financial request practices?
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, if they have any discussion.
If they have anything, I don't know if they do.
Thank you.
Well, I would, Madam President, I would preliminarily before that go ahead and ask that that, I would have the right to amend the agenda to show that that would be a resolution of the Hamilton County concerning reserves and liquidity policy.
I would second that.
Amy, would you, is your motion...
So I can make that motion, yes, and then you would second that on top of the original, yes.
Okay. Any other discussions? Okay, all in favor, roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
It passes. Next, we have discussion on council commitment for funding of domestic violence project.
So we had a fruitful discussion, obviously, in our work session.
So you were like...
No, I was just saying we had a fruitful discussion, since we don't technically, we won't be actually appropriating anything until next month. This is just the opportunity for us to commit as a body, so we would vote on that, but the money itself would not be allocated until next month.
Anybody have any comments?
Well, I would make a motion of that effect, that I would move that we would move forward with additional funding out of 5.5 million for the domestic violence project, which will be voted on formally in our March meeting.
Out of County General, is that your...
Yes.
I would second his motion.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call for approval?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Thank you, passes.
Thank you.
You'll be in front of us next month.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have a semi-annual report of commissary records from the sheriff for review. And do we need to approve that?
There's nobody taking any vacations this month.
No?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Next, we have Hamilton County Express scheduling software. Do we have anyone here from that, from Janus, or that scud, the software organization?
Guess that'll be a short presentation.
And they did give us an extensive presentation at a workshop last month, so council, this body is fully aware of what they're planning, and they have some scheduling improvements that they're going to be making, so it's really great stuff coming.
And we also have materials in effect.
Yes. Moving on, we have additional appropriations, reductions and transfers. I'm opening the public hearing.
There you go.
For it. The first item is General Fund 1,000 requesting appropriation of $402,257.96. We have the, first item is the clerk transfer of $6,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Next is Coroner 144 Amendment for part-time clerical staff.
So moved.
Second.
Do you got a spot to put this person? Yes, okay, well, we'll make a spot.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Passes. Next is Buildings and Grounds, additional request of $402,257.96.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next is a 144 Amendment for Buildings and Grounds, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, for vote.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next, we have a Sheriff 144 Amendment. Do I have amendments, there are several, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is this going to have any budget impact, deputy?
I honestly do not know what's in front of you right there. Is it special pay?
I don't know.
Sure. Security team, specialty certification pay of fifteen...
Yeah, so it will not have an impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve for a roll call, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Passes. Next, we have a probation reduction of $70,000, do I have a motion?
So moved.
We can add a reduction, second.
Roll call for the vote?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Health Department Fund 1168-9512, local health maintenance requesting $3,304.33. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
No, I just wanted to be here for, if there were any questions, number two that's coming up.
There's going to be, just stand right there, young man.
I was ready.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next is the one that there'll be questions, is Fund 1161 requesting permission to go to Personnel Committee to request two additional employees and reclassification employee in 1159. Do I motion to approve for discussion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, just any discussion?
Yeah, what's the budget impact on these two new employees there?
The budget impact, this 1161 is our state funds that comes to us through our local health funds, so there shouldn't be any impact on county funds, and the one employee that we'd like to look at doing a reclassification, we can actually use state funds in 1161 to actually help supplement that from, that's in 1159 currently.
Well, that's about as good as answers you're going to come up with, isn't it?
I'm going to try to work it as best I can, if you'll give me permission to proceed to the Personnel Committee.
Good.
Thank you. Any other, may I, roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
I forgot to ask, you got someplace to put these people?
It's going to be tight.
Everything's tight.
Everything's going to be tight, but we're going to make it work. I probably got a few part-time people that have spread out a little bit in my office, I'm going to crunch them up.
Good.
Thank you. Next, we have Fund 1213, guardian ad litem, additional appropriation requesting $60,500. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
May I have roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Fund 1222, Communications 144 Amendment, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call for the vote?
Is there a, is there a budget impact here?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next, we have Fund 1234 Prosecutor Forfeiture Fund of additional appropriation requesting $82,500. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next, we have Fund 2,500 dot 2,501, user fee fund, pre-trial diversion additional appropriation requesting $102,892.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Before you, Amy, before, where was the rental space that we're getting to the prosecutor's office?
I think that's what this money...
When I knew it was for where?
I think it's up by Blue Burger.
Yeah, and that sky, blue sky.
That's right, thank you.
Blue sky, that's right, blue sky.
Next is Fund 2,500 dot 2,504, user fee funds care requesting additional appropriation of $90.
So moved.
Oh, that's way too much.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next is Fund 2,500 dot 2,504, user fee fund care requesting transfer of $5,000. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next is 2,500 dash 2,505, user fee deferral fund reduction of $124,040. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Next is J., Grand Appropriation Reduction Transfer 144 Amendments.
Could I move to go ahead and combine one through nine?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call for the vote to combine?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call for the vote, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
It's approved. Next, we have announcements.
We've got to close the public hearing.
Now, close the public hearing, and then now we have announcements.
So just to kind of explain on the specialty pay, we've brought before the council before, like, that the type of specialties that we give pay for, and the amount of positions that are allotted, and then each year we budget that in 1215 and 1217, so unless something happens that I'm not aware, we should not ever bring before you a specialty pay that would increase or impact the budget. Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and just sorry, I didn't know which 144 amendments were coming up here today. And then I just wanted to, I know you guys have probably heard, that we're working with ICE to join the 287G program. I just want to kind of explain what that is real quick. It is a jail-based program, so we're not out in the field trying to ask for immigration status or anything like that. It is a program where we will have officers that are, that receive training and deputization from Homeland Security, so they'd be able to serve ICE detainers in our jail, and that's beneficial because if ICE does not show up within 48 hours, we'd have to release individuals. And also, there are times that we've had people pre-trial released or something like that, and later ICE would reach out with information that they wanted to detain someone and they're already released. So this would allow our officers to have that training and equipment to make sure we don't have people slipping through the cracks. This is for criminals who are arrested, and when they get here, we find out they're illegal, we'll work with ICE to have them removed if they're eligible for removal. I just want to make sure the community's clear that if they're a victim, or a witness, or whatever situation is, if they're not a criminal going to jail, they can call us, they can report crimes, they can cooperate with law enforcement. This program is not for those individuals, it's for criminals that are arrested and brought to the Hamilton County Jail. So I just wanted to share that. We had a meeting with ICE today, and we're going through that process right now. Obviously, we're at their discretion on how long it takes for, when they schedule the training, when they approve the MOU and those kind of things. We don't see a big impact on funding standpoint, because we already have officers that do this. For instance, last year we had 77 detainers. Well, if you think about that, that's one every four to five days on average. We had close to 600 individuals that were non-U.S. citizens that were booked into our jail, and I have a caveat there, that's self-reported, and we don't have a way to verify that now. We would be able to verify some of that if we were part of the 287G program. So about 10% of the people coming into, that were booked into our jail last year were non-U.S. citizens. And so even if you look at that, you're talking less than two a day on average. So I don't think it's going to be a huge impact or a time commitment. And we have assurances from ICE that when we do serve the detainers, that they're going to come and get them or have a contract company come get them. So there should not be added expenses of housing these individuals. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that, and just, you saw the news, and just wanted to let you be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council attorney?
For the group?
Okay. Auditor?
Just like, thank you everywhere for having names I can pronounce, I appreciate that.
You did a great job. I was, I was actually thinking mine would be a tongue twister.
You're probably going to be saying that in your sleep.
You did such a good job, I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Why are you naming those names?
That was the hardest part of the job, I'm a shoe in.
Well, thank you, we are adjourned.